Anthony and I have been, we've done this a couple of times now in the neighborhoods that we share because his district overlaps over half of my district now. And so we try to do these every once in a while to give people an opportunity to, you know, outside of an election period, to give people an opportunity to discuss issues that they feel are important to them, whether it be legislative or otherwise community issues. And so we wanted to, you know, do this tonight at the Nazaro Center. Hopefully, we have some good discussion. And of course, you know, we can always talk offline later if there's something that you wanted to approach us about but maybe not feel comfortable necessarily on camera doing. By all means, you know, you can do that. And, you know, for me, one of the reasons why I was so into doing this when Anthony actually approached me with doing these types of things was when I ran a couple of years ago, you know, accessibility was to me one of the things I really wanted to run off of and allow people to have the accessibility to talk to their rep anytime they possibly could. And seeing the faces in the room right now, I do see many of you all the time, but I know Anthony shares that as well. He wants to be as accessible as possible and make sure that people know their senator or know who they, you know, who's representing them in the Senate and on issues that are important across the state. So without further ado, let me introduce Anthony Pupales.
Thank you, Aaron. And thank you for coming. I know it's a pretty small crowd and this is kind of a tough time to be doing events. There's a lot going on, you know, Halloween's coming up, the Red Sox are in the World Series, so we'll make sure we'll finish before, you know, good time, yeah, but even before. We want to make sure we don't, you know, we make mistakes sometimes, but the one mistake we don't make is getting in between people and food or people and the Red Sox in the World Series when we have an event like this. So we'll be kind of quick. But as Aaron mentioned, I like to do these things in the spring. You know, I did little town hall meetings in Revere, Winthrop, East Boston, part of my district, and now in the fall, we're doing them in the rest of my district in Boston, the North End, Bay Village, Chinatown, the like, and Cambridge. And it's a real good opportunity for me to hear from people, more importantly, for us to be able to talk about a couple of things that we've worked on in this first half of the legislative session so far and what might be coming up in the next half of the legislative session. So what I think I'll do is I'll talk maybe for a couple of minutes, Aaron, about, you know, a couple of things we've worked on together. Transportation finance reform is a pretty big deal for people who live in town and in my district because of the MBTA and the need for revenue for the MBTA to avoid increases in fares that had been proposed by the MBTA board. We were able to, hello?
Hi.
We were able to come up with a revenue package that we believe will address a lot of the needs from a capital construction standpoint for projects that the administration needs to advance, but also avoid fare increases that might have been, you know, a little too high for people to handle. And so we're pleased that we were able to advance that piece of it. Welfare reform is a piece of legislation that my colleagues in the Senate worked on in the first half of the session. I believe Aaron and his colleagues in the House will be taking it up sometime this fall. You know, it gets a lot of attention, the so-called EBT fraud issues. You know, we looked at the issue more comprehensively and came up with a lot of issues to address, not only fraud, but helping people get back on their feet, maybe restructuring some of the training programs that might help people get a job rather than be on cash assistance. The photo identification component of an EBT card, we actually did in the budget, and so that was an issue that was getting a lot of headlines. But I would strongly suggest it's not necessarily the main component. It just kind of gets a lot of headlines politically and from a media standpoint, but there was a lot more to trying to go after than some of the inefficiencies in the transitional assistance system. We believe we've addressed that in legislation that I believe the House will be taking up sometime. A couple of weeks from now. And so I feel like I'm rambling. You want to jump in?
No, I mean, I think, like Anthony said, you know, the transportation finance reform was probably the issue that took up the first five, six months of our session, really, the oxygen in the room, as one person called it. It took up a lot of the oxygen in the room. It was something that we dealt with firsthand, went back and forth on revenue packages, and eventually landed on one that we were able to feel was sufficient in terms of building a system long-term that we need to be sustainable and be efficient in our, you know, especially for us that take the tea every day. You know, there's, you know, people in Western Mass or in Central Mass don't necessarily have those types of issues necessarily with the MBTA like we do in downtown Boston, for instance, because, you know, it's something that we live with every single day. We're not, you know, most of us aren't reliant on our cars, but unlike, you know, 495 or even further out west where, you know, the gas tax is something that was more tangible for them on a regular basis. And so that was something that really took a lot of discussion, took a lot of time and energy to finally get to a point where we had a revenue package that we could feel comfortable supporting and getting behind. One of the things I've been working on over the last couple of months is that the Public Service Committee, I was named the chair of the Public Service Committee by Speaker DeLeo, and that's been a very exhausting and busy committee in terms of the amount of work that takes place. There's almost 500 bills that come through that committee, and it's probably the second most busiest committee outside of maybe Ways and Means.
Financial Services.
I'll bet you, I'll bet you in the state that that's wrong. But Judiciary might be one that actually has, is just as busy. But it is one of the busier committees, you know, in the House and in the State House. Excuse me. And so one of the bigger bills that has been talked about has been this Pension and Healthcare Reform Bill. We're actually having a hearing on it on Thursday, and it was based off of a commission that was, that met a couple of years, the last two years or whatever they met, and they finally came up with a report that would change some of the pension situation and some of the healthcare tier situations for public service employees. And the governor filed that bill back in February, March. We are having the hearing on it on Thursday. Changes the vesting for public employees from 10 years to 20 years, changes the healthcare tiers, makes it, allows the cities and towns a little more flexibility in terms of their ability to pay less on premiums for public service employees, and it changes potential future pension percentages that you would gain over, you know, depending on the amount of years that you serve the public. It's a huge bill with a lot of interested parties. Everybody that's ever worked in the public sector has, I feel like, has reached out to me over the last couple of months, asking or wanting to voice their opinion. And it is, so it's something that's kind of taken up a lot of the energy legislatively for me over the last, you know, so far throughout the summer and into the fall. And not to say that after we have the hearing on Thursday that we're going to have all the answers or have a final situation, but it's something that we're going back and forth with at the moment, and we will continue to do so, you know, over the next couple of months.
So one of the committees I chair is Financial Services, and the last session, hello?
I'm sorry.
Well, that's fine. Thank you for coming. We produced a couple of significant bills, one Loan Modification/Foreclosure Prevention Bill that has been pretty effective. The Attorney General's Office administers that, and we've seen that it's been pretty effective. And we've also, you know, been saying that the market has led to a lot of declines in the foreclosure starts as well in Massachusetts, and so it's been a good sign from an economic recovery standpoint. But we're working on, you know, a bunch of bills in Financial Services. One that we're looking at is ATM safety. There was a horrible murder, the young woman in South Boston, Amy Lord, I believe was her name. And so one of our colleagues refiled a new draft of an ATM safety bill that comes before our committee. We're trying to put together a variety of stakeholders from, at least from a security standpoint. I'm not a security expert, so we're trying to understand more about what are some of the technological changes that might be able to be made at our ATMs in Massachusetts that might be able to prevent something crazy to happen like that of that young woman. So, yeah.
Another piece of legislation that we've both been involved in over the last two years, and I think Anthony's actually been involved in a lot longer, but I got more involved in it last year because I was the election laws chair at the time, is election reform bills. There has been a number of proposals that's been put on the table, ranging from online registration to early voting to pre-registration for 16 and 17-year-olds to election audits. And that is something that I foresee potentially both the House and Senate taking up in the second half of the session. To what degree, not 100% sure exactly what the pieces to that puzzle are going to be, but stuff that we've worked on, and at least in the House, we passed pre-registration for 16 and 17-year-olds, we passed election audits. Now, the new bill that's been proposed has things of early voting and online registration, things that I personally support and would like to see move forward. Depending on how that actually is implemented and finalized is another story, and I don't think we knew that at the time, but that's something that has gotten a lot of attention most recently and will get a lot of attention, especially from activists who are dealing with this, like the mass votes of the world and people like that. I actually failed, I forgot to start the proper way, and that is to introduce my newest legislative aide here to my right, Patrick, I keep calling him Packy as I watch the world, Patrick Lyons. Patrick is a lifelong North End resident and someone who I've known since he was a kid. Also Maria Papal, who used to work for me, upgraded and now works for Anthony. And obviously, of course, everyone knows Blake Weber, my chief of staff, who's been with me since I got elected in 2009.
I'm glad you finally recognized it was an upgrade.
Yeah. It's just something real, not real.
Does anyone have any questions or anything they want to jump in on, try to stop us from talking?
Yeah, we want this to be more of a back and forth than just us talking.
You know what's on your minds that's important for us to hear?
My name is Tony Gilati, and I'm here as a lifelong resident and also business owner. I also am vice president of the Chamber of Commerce and sit on the North End Waterfront Council. But basically, I'm here as a resident. Would you mind if I take, I know you're here from the state and you have busy schedules, but do you mind if I take it down to a local level? We have a serious problem in this neighborhood with trash, as Aaron knows, he also lives here. I attended pathetic volumes, I say, meeting on October 22nd up at City Hall. I was very disappointed with the number of people that actually showed up to voice their opinion. The consensus in the room is that everybody is fed up with the trash, the rodents, the trash pickers, the trash in the gutter. I mean, it just goes on and on. It's endless. And what I did was I started a petition, and I know that the subject had been criticized in years past, but I started a petition that we never have trash on the street overnight, ever. And I think that part of the problem that there was a lot of criticism last time was that we weren't in the middle of negotiating our city contract with the trash handles. But now we are. So we are in a very unique position to be able to negotiate the times as well for pickup, trash pickup. And I can't speak for any other neighborhood except for this neighborhood and the surrounding areas in that it is vital and it is so important to the public health and safety that we get the trash off the street. And I'm proposing that we have a 6:00 AM to 9:00 AM drop-off only and that the trash start to be picked up after 9:00 AM. And if that's at all possible, I'm going to try and get over 1,000 signatures. I'm going to hit every poll in this neighborhood on November 5th and see what we can do. Pass it off to Sal Matina, who is very on board with this, and see if we can negotiate this as part of the contract.
My name is Ron Supers. Talking, you know, related to trash, what's the status of the State House relative to increasing the deposit for bottles and cans? Okay, a lot of people, you know, pick up, you know, if they get a nickel. Maybe people would return bottles and cans by themselves, was it dime or even higher?
Yeah, I mean, I support the bottle bill, so-called, the new variation of it.
And it's been filed since more than 25 years.
Yeah, so I don't know if, see, the bill that's been filed, it's passed one branch the last couple of sessions, but it hasn't passed another branch. Not because of you, I'm just saying. And that bill would expand, to expand the bottle bill, from 1983 to include bottled water in energy drinks, right? I don't think it actually increases the deposit on what is currently, you know, a can of Pepsi, right? So, but it would expand the bottle bill to cover waters and energy drinks.
That's only going to cause, you know, more pickers throughout the street.
That's been, and I support the bottle bill, but that is the one thing that...
But that's never been proposed. What you just mentioned is the first I've heard of anyone saying increase the deposit.
Many other states have 10 cents or more.
That's what you're talking about with the pickers, that's one thing that I've been told from some of the people in this neighborhood that have told me they don't like the bottle bill necessarily. A lot of people, most people do like the bottle bill, but for some people that have told me they don't like the bottle bill, their main reason is because they're afraid that there'll be more pickers and more people opening up the bags and leaving them open, you know, throughout the night and creating more of a havoc or more of an opportunity for rodents.
Maybe many families would return the bottles on their own instead of throwing it out to the trash. You know, 10 bottles would be a problem.
Well, I think, and as Tony pointed or touched upon, this is actually a very interesting and important time in regard to trash issues in our neighborhood because of the fact that the city is negotiating new contracts to start January 2014. We actually have an opportunity at this point in time right now to really start talking with the city in an open dialogue. And I agree, I wish there was more people there at the meeting, but I was happy that the fact that there was the people that were there, that there was about 50-some-odd people, I was there, Councilor Lamatina was as well, to talk about, you know, what we want to see going forward in the next, in the next contract. And one thing that I would like to see more of outside of maybe the changing of the hours, and I leave that open to a discussion through the neighborhood, I personally put my trash out in the morning as much as I possibly can out of respect for the fact of keeping trash off the street. I know that that is not as convenient for others, and we've had, we've had those meetings before, and they have been contentious, back and forth between people saying that they would like to see 6 to 9. Some people maybe don't necessarily want to see it just limited to 6 to 9. But there is, I think there is an opportunity for us to talk about more recycling, and I think that there should be, maybe a discussion about maybe adding a recycling day in terms of what's going on in this neighborhood. I know that, I don't think any other neighborhood has more than one recycling day, but maybe we can be used as a pilot or as a test case in terms of having two recycling days, because I think it's, because of the fact that we're so compact, you know, we deal with, we deal with the trash issues more than basically any other neighborhood. And to have a second recycling day, I think, would maybe, you know, lessen that issue that you're talking about and promote more, and promote more recycling, promote people to have more, an opportunity to recycle more than just one day a week.
On that point, though, it's pretty controversial amongst our colleagues, the, even the added component to have water or energy drinks included. It's always been a pretty controversial. Some people view it as a pocketbook issue that even though it is a deposit and you get your money back if you return, some people view it that it's a tax, which it's not. But that's why it's really had trouble getting through the whole process and becoming law. And I don't have any confidence that in this session that that'll change. Just going to be frank with you on the prospects of it.
Who's the small business?
I believe the governor is probably for it.
I think he is.
I think he is. I think he is, yeah.
So coming from the House where it hasn't been, you know, like Anthony said, it's passed the Senate, it hasn't passed the House. I know you're very nice, I appreciate that. But it has passed the Senate, hasn't passed the House. I think one of those concerns from leadership that they hear from the members of the House is the fact that there are a lot of small business owners that do not, that worry about, you know, the additional tax put on, you know, some of the, or what they deem as a tax or additional revenue that's put on these with water and energy drinks. They deem that as making it harder or more harder for them to do business and to make a profit off of, you know, in this economy. So that is, that message has resonated with amongst many members of the House who, you know, who have small businesses in their district. I personally have supported the bottle bill and continue to support the bottle bill. And, but we'll see what, we'll see what happens the rest of the session. Senator, do you have a question?
No, getting back to, you know, doing two days recycling. First of all, again, they got to go through that same story again, that people are not following the rules. On my street alone, or if you walk by there every morning, on recycling day, they are not putting it in clear plastic bags. They have it out all over the place so that when anybody, when the guy comes and picks up the trash, it's flown all over the street because it's, recycling is not being put in plastic bags. You've got to emphasize that, Phil, and maybe put a big flag. I was getting ready to go put signs on the people in my street, their buildings, because I'm getting sick of seeing it. They're coming out with the Trader Joe's shopping bags, they're putting their bottles on, and so all that stuff, my street, forget it, is the windiest street in the whole city. And that stuff flies all over from the bag, so recycling two days ain't going to solve the problem of the trash.
No, it's not.
And at 6, 9 o'clock in the morning, it's not going to solve it either of the rats because you're going to still have the business people with their trash at night, so why should they keep their trash out night if I have to worry about getting out and having my tenants put it out at 9 o'clock in the morning? And furthermore, my street is a very busy historic street. You can stop at 8 o'clock to 8:30 in the morning, I have tourists there all the time. So I don't think they would like to see that, the trash all, like, for some reason this morning, I don't know if they were trying to test us, they didn't come this morning until after 9:00. So I said to my husband, I said, "Oh, you think they're trying to test us to see if we like the afternoon?" I said, "They're lucky there was no tourist on our street." So I'm against it. I'm against it.
Tom Chivoli, this is a question for Anthony, because Aaron, you might not be aware of this. In mid-'90s, a young man, the appropriate mayor Menino, when visited the North End to look at the vacant Michelangelo Middle School.
Yeah.
And a group of us from Cops Hill had asked the mayor to please consider setting aside a certain amount of square footage so that there could be a visitor center that could have restrooms, but not just public lavatories. It could be a visitor center that could be used maybe to employ some of the seniors, some of the kids as far as helping to run it. At nighttime, could be used for meetings like this because it's 2,000 square feet. And the city of Boston, in fact, made that a precondition for the RFP that was bid. Some people wanted to turn it into a hotel or a Suffolk dormitory. As you know, it turned into elder housing and also programming for the elderly. Anthony accompanied the mayor.
Yeah, I got that. I was a young man at the time. I remember that.
And as a matter of fact, Michael Acquarino's daughter, who was three, Angelica, the mayor came in and she was upstairs, and Michael was proud of his daughter, and the mayor stood at the bottom of the stairs and said, "Angelica, this is the mayor of Boston, come down and say hello." She said, "I don't want to," she was yelling at him. So that was Michael's moment in the sun. We've had, as you know, you've seen the letters in thenorthendwaterfront.com, you've heard some of the constituents, and this is a lot of your constituents and stakeholders, the Freedom Trail sites, ABCD, East Boston Development Corporation, all the people we know, Nina and Steve Ayers and Peter Scolaro and Leah. I wanted to know if, in particular, both of you, but the reason why I directed this errand towards Anthony was because he was there for the genesis.
He probably weren't born yet. I was an high school.
Well, the point is, would you be...
What did they have to do with that? Why did they...
Well, I mean, we all know, but it was a line item, and it was going swell for four years.
The funding had an earmark.
Correct.
Yeah.
Right. Now, we've been trying to talk about alternatives because if it's a given, we're in a poor economy and that we are not going to use taxpayers' money. We talked about user fees using the European model, having underwriting from a bank, having local merchants being able to showcase some of the things. I want to know if you're like, it's almost like the uncle meeting with the nieces and nephews, would you sponsor a community forum to allow all the stakeholders, the residents, businesses, Freedom Trail sites, agencies, the fraternal societies, organizations, to talk about a public health issue, and that is the lack of public restrooms? And to use this as an opportunity, it'll be once in a lifetime because we don't have in the North End space to develop things. We have 2,000 beautiful square feet handicap accessible that was designed to be a visitor center, and we're now going to have maybe a little internecine warfare because agencies that we care about and who are looking for space, and I told Nina and I told Steve this for four or five years, it was irresistible. We knew that the funding was going to run out one day and that we would need an alternative way of funding it. And now other groups are using it, which is fine in a sense. There's nothing wrong with English as a second language and having children learning their piano lessons, but that was a public health issue and we fought for it. We spent hundreds of hours. And I want to know if you would, I'm not asking for a favor, I'm not asking for you to take sides, but I'm asking for a community forum. Architects or city planners would call it a charrette, a fancy word for, let's get everybody together and throw their ideas in. But I think you could maybe serve as a facilitator to avoid unnecessary squabbling among your constituents and the stakeholders as you use. I want to know publicly if you would be open to the idea of facilitating a community forum on that event.
Yes.
Okay, I appreciate it.
I would actually just say yes and also point out to the fact, or I want to make this point, that I just, I kind of dealt with it firsthand a couple, like, less than a month ago. We organized the 5K road race from the North End through downtown and back into the North End to benefit the New England Shelter for Homeless Veterans, and we were looking for, we were a bit nervous because leading up to like maybe the last month, we realized we didn't have a place for people to go to the bathroom if they, you know, runners coming back and not having a place to go, and Amy helped organize that. And so we scrambled to find a place because obviously we couldn't do it at the, we couldn't have them keep going to the firehouse or whatever because, you know, the firemen, you know, they deal with that all the time. Luckily, we were lucky enough to have Elliot School, and Tracy opened up her doors for about for an hour afterwards to allow, so we didn't have that issue. But it almost was like crystal, it almost crystallized it for me firsthand in terms of how difficult this actually is, the fact that we really have, not that I didn't, I wasn't aware of the issue because we've talked about it many times, but the fact that we don't have much public restroom space in this neighborhood and especially along the Freedom Trail. I, and I know Anthony would, and I can speak from here, when I say we'd be open to any solution that would make things possible, and I know Councilor Lamatina is open to discussions as well, but I think maybe having all the stakeholders in a room is the right way to go and to maybe hash some of the nuances or the issues that we have.
I'll let it drop, but the final word, it is a public health issue and it is a source of embarrassment. It's an extreme issue for all of us, but particularly for businesses. So I really think, thank you if you'll follow.
Follow-up.
All right.
Thank you. Questions?
This is just being puzzled by something you said a couple of minutes ago. How can you make ATMs safer so that the kind of crime that happened in South Boston wouldn't happen again?
Well, it's been proposed, and I don't know if you can make it safer. So we've got legislation before the committee that I chair that people suggest would make it safer. So we're going through the process of reviewing that with security officials. Yes, some suggest if, if there was an emergency button to push, right? Something maybe as simple as that. If someone pushed, if there was a button that you could push, maybe, maybe with a flag. Now, this young woman was driven around at four or five different ATMs. Maybe if there wasn't an emergency button. Believe me, the banking community has suggested that you can't make it, that they have all, you know, they have cameras, they have different precautions in there. Some people have even suggested that you have a special code. So if you, if your normal code for your ATM card to withdraw cash is 1234, maybe, you know, 4321 is your emergency code, that if you type, if that, you know, if that woman in there, and there was a technology, you know, in play that allows you to push in a code that, you know, sent a signal to whoever's monitoring that in particular ATM machine at that point in time, maybe it would send, you know, a signal out to anyone, you know, police car at the closest location, someone's in an emergency situation ATM. You know, banks have suggested, well, maybe, you know, maybe that would be ineffective from an efficiency standpoint because maybe it would accidentally be put in, or the button, if there was something as simple as a button, maybe the button would get pushed by accident. But we're looking at this thing pretty closely. But, we're looking at this thing pretty closely. It's not something that you hear of often, but I know they have done some, they have done some things to ATMs in New York State, in New York City, that we're looking at to see if it's at least made them safer. Again, this was a very rare, but horrific incident, but if we can make it safer, we will. So that's kind of what we're looking at.
Can we talk about the Boston Garden project, A causeway Street, Lovejoy Wharf, and the construction that's gonna be happening on the Charleston Bridge? Seems like the timeframe for all these projects is between 2014, 2017. The impact of the Boston Garden, it's gonna be 497 residential units and 306 hotel rooms, and construction of 668,000 square feet of office space and 800 parking spots. The construction alone, never mind what happens after, the impact that happens after all is said and done, along with the construction of Lovejoy, which is, I think, 167 residential units that are now, they were approved for rentals, now it's gonna be approved or coming up for approval for condos, and the, in conjunction with all of that, the construction of the Charleston Bridge. I mean, we are gonna be completely shut off, there's gonna be absolutely no way to get to any of the roadways that we need to. I'm very concerned about elderly getting to the hospital in time, you know. Straight down Commercial Street, Causeway Street is our only way to Mass General Hospital. By the way, my mother brought that up to me, I didn't even think of that. But the rodents during the construction, the pollution, and then what happens after it's all done, when there's, you know, a thousand more people in the area, all going to the same place, and having to use our roadways, North Washington Street, the Charleston Bridge, Commercial Street, Causeway Street. And then what happens when there's an event at the Garden, at the same time that everybody's trying to leave work, come home, trying to get to where they're going, and we're dealing with something that you touched on in the beginning, a T station that is 100 years old, that was projected to handle traffic 50 years in advance, which means that it's 50 years behind our time now to handle the traffic and congestion of this city. It's gonna be complete chaos, I mean, you're not gonna be able to walk, you're not gonna be able to drive. I mean, it's just, it's gonna be nuts. How is the city, state, and all these agencies planning on controlling all this? I mean, it's really gonna, I don't think that anybody is realizing the impact. Even just the construction of the Charleston Bridge alone will send this neighborhood into a tailspin, never mind everything else that's gonna happen, it's just, I mean, what are your feelings on this?
Well, a couple points, one, the construction of Lovejoy Wharf is ongoing right now. I suspect, and someone can correct me if I'm wrong, it'll be completed before the construction of the Garden begins. So there won't, those two projects, to my knowledge, and, you know, things could get changed based off delays or whatnot, but to my knowledge, those two projects will not be being built at the same time.
But the traffic though?
Okay, no, no, yeah, that's one point. The second thing, on the Charleston Bridge aspect, while I agree with you that, you know, the Charleston Bridge, whenever they, whenever we do, you're talking about the rebuilding of the Charleston Bridge or the reconstruction of...
Well, I think the gas lines that are leaking have been leaking for years, I mean, it's absolutely necessary.
Now, that was, that's the point, I think it is, I mean, the fact that that middle lane, that those two middle lanes have been closed since, I think, since that time you walked, you walked around Michelangelo back then, sometime in the mid-nineties.
We weren't even born.
I remember going down the middle lane, so, I don't think I actually could drive myself down the middle lane, but I do remember going down the middle lane. And, and the fact that those two, that, you know, that that's been shut off for that, for like, 20 something years now, or almost 20 years now, is, you know, and just the fact that the bridge is really, you know, basically falling apart in front of our eyes, it's a necessity that has to get done. But, I would suggest and hope that those, that if, when they do the Charleston Bridge, that all the other projects along that, along Causeway Street are completed. To your point, yes, it is a more, it'll become a more congested area, a more, a busier area, especially on game nights and stuff like that. But I think the way the structure is set up right now, first off, Causeway Street is an absolute eyesore. Amongst the city, and probably, probably, you know, downtown crossing got all the, has gotten all the attention over the years about, you know, what, you know, how it's falling apart and this and that. I think Causeway Street has been very underrated in terms of how, what the activity, you know, how, what it could be and what it is. It is, it is, it is a desolated area, you know, empty storefronts all up and down, or rotating storefronts, there's never been anything steady that's happened over there. So, to fix that area up is gonna, and, you know, that's the centerpiece, or the heart of fixing that up is going to be that Boston Garden project and construction. So, it is gonna add, it is gonna add some congestion, and there are some issues that are around it. I, and we just did a letter, a joint letter on this, on that project, where we addressed some of the concerns that we have. I mean, one, for instance, is that if they're gonna put more restaurants there, in order, you know, if they're gonna put more restaurants there for obviously game nights, that they aren't in competition necessarily with North End restaurants, and obviously not, you know, the Massaminos, the Filippo's, the people that rely on Garden activity. If you're gonna go to the North End, you're gonna, you're gonna get a certain meal, in this case, most likely an Italian meal. If you're gonna go to the Garden, you're gonna stay at the Garden, you get, it's a different type of meal. You're not looking to get the same type of meal that you would in the North End, so they're not competing for the same clientele. But it is, it is, there is gonna be some issues surrounding that, I'm not gonna hide behind those or doubt that. But, the fact that we have to get that area cleaned up, I think is, takes precedence over everything. And then on top of it, going back to the bridge, the fact that we have to get the bridge fixed, I think it's gonna have to get done.
There's absolutely no...
The bridge, the money, and Phil's gonna chime in here, or no? There has been discussion about 2015, 2016, that funding would be available. That it wouldn't necessarily be when the construction takes place, but funding would be available in 2015.
It was on the federal register with Japalano, was the congressman, and it just kept getting delayed and delayed and delayed. It's not on the federal register. If it was, it would say $15 million, which is not 10 times what the cost to fix that bridge since it was proposed. But, I understand the city has sent their information to the government to redo it and do the Charleston Bridge. So it shouldn't happen before that, like you said. The only other thing, something we're forgetting here, before any of those projects get built, there's already 2,500 housing units already there, but just to finish.
On canal, yeah.
Yeah, so there's a lot more traffic right there.
Right.
And some of those, and for instance, on Lovejoy Wharf, Lovejoy Wharf is housing, but it's also, it's also office-based commerce, it's gonna put their headquarters there.
And, you know, that leads to also, I mean, even if it's just a scale back, I mean, one of the buildings that they're proposing is 600 feet high. I mean, that is enormous, that building alone is gonna block people's view of the Zacon Bridge, which, you know, Boston is now so proud of. And, I mean, what is, what is all that housing market, does it have to be 497 units? We already have, I mean, so many units that are being built there now. That's gonna crush our rental market here. I mean, you know, we have landlords that have been in the North End for 100 years. Their families rely on the income of their properties to support themselves. These properties have been in families for, you know, generations, and this is how these people make their living. They're gonna crush our real estate market if these projects just are led to blow up and not scale back in some way, shape, or form. I agree with you 100% that, you know, these projects have to be done, that, you know, Causeway Street is a disaster and has been for years, and the Charleston Bridge and everything. I'm just saying that we need to be considered, the North End needs to be considered. We can't be washed over, we can't turn into another West End that disappears off the map. It just, it can't happen, we're too valuable, we're a very historical neighborhood, we have people of generation after generation, we're a very popular neighborhood, we are one of the busiest destinations in all of Massachusetts. We just can't be overlooked, and we can't be overrun by rodents and pollution and all the problems that are gonna happen with these projects.
One of the reasons why they wanna build out there that high, and when I say out there, I mean the West End, is because they can't build here. This is, I mean, because we have abided by a 55-foot height limit that has been now since the early to mid-eighties, that, you know, any political figure, or any, and any developer knows that they can't, or let me say, any developer knows they're gonna run into opposition from either political figures or from the community immediately, and they don't even propose it. You know what I mean, like, I mean, as, and you're in the neighborhood council, and I was neighborhood council president, and when I was there, everyone knew not to go in front, and everyone knows not to go in front of newer, asking for anything over 55 feet, it doesn't happen. And it's worked, and so, it's kept the neighborhood, while maybe insulated in some ways to what's going on, you know, on the peripheral, it's kept the neighborhood unique and historic, and allowed, you know, us to be that special place that, you know, we all love this neighborhood so much.
If I may, on, just, when you were talking to Charleston Bridge, I wanted to make a little public service announcement on a couple of projects that might or might not affect you. So, the Callahan Tunnel, right, you're all aware of, that's gonna close in January for a few months, total closure, right? So, and the Secretary of Transportation is mindful, I think we've helped them be mindful of some of these issues, there's a lot of projects that are going on, this project on, one of the Storo Drive tunnels, right, that'll be going on simultaneously, you got the Longfellow project going on.
Government Center.
And then Government Center is gonna close for, I believe, 18 months. They're gonna delay that closure, we were asking them to consider delaying it, they're gonna delay that closure until the Callahan Tunnel project is done, supposed to be done in April. And these are, again, these are, from a Government Center standpoint, it's a brand new, kind of its last blue line train station, I think, of the modernization component.
They had to by ADA standard, they had to follow ADA standards and have a, you know, handicap accessibility, and all the green line and blue line, you know, all the green stuff, right?
Yeah, they're almost done.
Yeah, this is actually the last one, because they've basically done it, built it, from coming out, going in, and Government Center is the last one that they've done.
The Callahan closure is necessary, all the decking underneath the road, you know, we drive in the road, this is a flat road, right, we think we're in a bubble, underneath that, you know, it's like, it's a bridge, basically, right? That goes down to the bottom of the, whatever bubble that is, so, at least that's how they explained it to me, I'm not real good with that, that engineering stuff. But, and so they, the decking has got some corrosion going on, it's not something that they can, you know, afford to wait to do, so they're gonna, they're gonna do that project, and then, I believe, at some point in time in 2015, they have to do similar work to the summer tunnel coming in. So for someone who's daily commuters through the tunnels, yeah, it's gonna be a little fun.
Phil Romano said he would be coming back to the community, you know, my...
Yeah, they've been doing it with Public Wellness.
Also going to the Chamber of Farmers, so he's making his...
Yeah, he's gonna be in Winthrop actually this week for me, you know, talking to those folks. So I just wanted to remind people.
Just getting back to these buildings that are being built, or these developments, and I read it in the paper somewhere, maybe gonna explain it better, because I don't understand. Why are they allowing these tall buildings, or all these buildings that are being built, they think they're giving them a break on the far as the parking goes? If you have all those places built, and they're not gonna have enough parking, we don't have parking here, as it is for ourselves, so what's that gonna do for us? Is force the people that live here and that pay the park, that, of course, they're gonna say, "Wow, we need the parking spaces." So if there goes inflation on our parking spaces, why are they allowing them not to build enough parking spaces? Or is it 1.5, I don't understand that, Jewel, can you tell me why they're allowing them not to build enough?
I'll give you, I'll give you what I think of the reason, and I'll preface it by saying, I don't know if I agree 100% with it, I like the premise, but I don't know if I agree with the implementation necessarily. There, all these projects are being built along, around T stations, basically, you know, Government Center, I mean, not Government Center, Haymarket with the Government Center garage, and North Station with the Garden Project, and Lovejoy Wharf. Their thought process is that they're trying to build, you know, more transient-oriented, like, people that are gonna be living there are gonna be more transient-oriented, and look to take the train more, you know, you know, ride bikes, instead of needing to be reliant on a car. I like that, I wanna see, I like that they're, that's what they're going at. I don't know if necessarily, just by forcing the issue, it's gonna happen. I don't know if that's gonna happen, and I'm not on the VRA to decide that, and so, you know, I mean, or make that final decision, but I don't know if that's just gonna, you know, organically take place. You're right, we, but I think at a certain point in time, there's going to become an oversaturation of, or not oversaturation, a overwhelming need for parking, and where are they gonna go? Are they gonna go to, I mean, are they gonna go outside the neighborhood, are they gonna go to the Brink's? Are they gonna go somewhere else? I mean, that's a question that I think we're gonna have to face, I think, down the road. They're not gonna get residential parking spots, I mean, because they don't live inside, in the North End parameter. So they're not gonna get residential parking spots for the North End, they might get Western residential parking spots, so I don't know how they're handling it, or how they're approaching that issue there. But, it's something that is gonna, you know, is questionable down the road, and it's kind of a, almost an experiment in terms of see whether they can get, you know, enough people in these buildings, or get, you know, get the market there that they need, without having, or without having people that aren't gonna rely on a car. So I mean... I'll just give it to Tony.
My question is, with all these big developments and these big companies that are coming in, do they contribute any money at all to the communities around them? Anything at all? You know, the community centers, anything at all? Do you, do you tell them, like, you know, "You need to do this, or we need this," or, it's just, no? It's like right away.
Legally, I cannot do that.
But, don't you think that there should be something in place, like, you wanna build, you know, 7,000 apartments down your street?
The city has a proposal, in every building that's being built.
You need to do, and my other thing is...
The linkage, so-called, right? Yeah, the linkage, it goes through the...
It doesn't come into us.
Yeah, I don't know what they, it goes to the VRA, right? That was the big thing back when they built the Convention Center, right? So they formed the process to make it go through linkage. I'll try to be, keep real careful, yeah, I, the, over time, you know, ethics rules have changed, ethics laws have changed, on what Aaron and I can or can't do with how we weigh in with, you know, charitable giving even, I mean, we can't advocate for it, but there are fine lines we have to be careful with.
I think in terms of the linkage money, in terms of the VRA, I think you've heard it from both people that are running from there, I think you're gonna see some potential more transparency involved in that, and that might, that might not solve the issue in terms of the money being directed towards the community, or, I mean, it really depends on the project, because if you're in an area where you can argue where your community actually lies, where does the community go, I mean, where does the money for the community go?
Like walking from here to North Station, like, okay, you wanna put 700 units, you need to light up that street, so people don't get, you know, in trouble on that street, like, just things like that. And my other question is, when are we gonna get some type of community center, besides the Great Mazaro, here, in Boston, in the North End, for our kids, for our grandchildren, just for our elderly? There is nowhere in the North End that you can really go and say, "Okay, you need help with heating, this is what you do. You have to go to this street, you have to go to that street." And I've been in other communities where I've walked in their community center, and they have lists. "You need heating, second floor." "Your kids need transportation, first floor." But not in the North End, we don't have that in the North End. And I, honestly, the Mazaro Center, I know everybody thinks that, you know, it's a big help, but it's not. It's not, it's not a big help at all. They close the doors, they shut people out, they have their own rules in this place. When are we gonna see that change? When can we ask you to help us change that for our kids in the neighborhood? Okay, the visitor spots, I don't know about anybody else, but I'm kinda sick of them. I'm sick of the visitor spots, I'm sick of someone saying to me, "Well, I'm gonna park here 'cause it's a visitor spot." You know, we're getting tagged, I get tagged for parking in a visitor spot, I get tagged. Why can't we get rid of the visitor spots and let them go park in the garages? Like, when I go to New York City, I have to park in a garage, I can't park on the street.
I think that just changed, Tony, I think, I think it, no, I think it just changed with the, we don't get tickets anymore.
I don't think they give any more tickets.
With the exception of four streets, you can park in a visitor spot anytime, a resident. But there's four streets to the exception, I don't remember them.
The signs, the signs are different, there are certain signs that say, a resident can park, I mean, it's two-hour visiting, except for residents who can park for as long as they want. Or, and then, but there's other signs that say that there's strictly two-hour parking.
I mean, is it a law that we have to have visitor spots in residential area?
It's not a law, but it's, and, I'm not arguing, there's, Tom Telling, the Commissioner of BTT will tell you, and he said it, he has said it in this community, in this room, I was here when he said it, they give out more resident permit stickers than are actual parking spots in the entire neighborhood. So, what does that tell you then? People are gonna be fighting for resident parking spots, where, you know, there's too many, it's almost like musical chairs. And eventually, someone's not gonna be able to find a chair, and someone's not gonna be able to find a spot. And there's no way to change that, because by the rule, by the city ordinance and by the law, I mean, or it should be, you know, you pay, you pay taxes in the city, you should be able to... in the city, you should be able to, if you live here, you should be able to, as long as you show you're a resident, you should be able to, be able to park there. But the problem, the difference is, and this goes, almost goes back to what we're talking about, in terms of trying to, trying to keep people, trying to, trying to build, build have people where people aren't relying on their cars, there isn't enough, there isn't enough parking spots for people that actually own cars now. Twenty years ago, not every, I mean, a lot of households might only have one car, now they have, even in this neighborhood, now they have, someone has two cars.
So, the extra visitor spots, I mean...
But the, no, so, so, getting back, getting back to that...
Could give us a little bit more.
You're, you're, you're right, and then, and the minute the city would do that, and I'm not saying that I agree with this or not, but the minute the city would do that, you'd have the businesses calling up, saying, we can't, we have no one that can come into this neighborhood to, to shop at Mike's, to shop at Modern, to shop, to go to restaurants, to go to this, you know?
But who lives here? The residents?
I agree, I agree, resident, resident.
Not the restaurants.
It's residence, it's residence first.
Not Mike's Pastry, not Modern Pastry, they all live in Bedford and wherever.
It's an ongoing, it's an ongoing balance between, between businesses and residents that we, that we try to, that we, that we all know, waking up and going to bed in this neighborhood, we deal with on a day-to-day basis, and, and finding that balance is forever impossible, but we try.
Go ahead.
No, you go first, I already asked.
I only have a pet peeve. I'm talking about the Greenway, I've been fighting with the Greenway on the mitigation on parcel twelve, they put that stupid fence up that was temporary, they put the, whatever they think is on the other side to accommodate all the tourists, I don't know what those panels are, but they're kinda crazy panels.
Oh, they have the pictures on photographs.
I wanted, I, I want something that's gotta be put up on, from Commercial Street up to probably Fulton Street, here's about parking lot, it doesn't matter. They have vinyl covering for those fences, if they're gonna leave that fence, if they're not gonna leave that fence, then I want, I want to have the parcel twelve exit covered by the mitigation process that they're supposed to do.
Yep.
They, they put that fence up and they disappeared on us. I talked to John O'Mile, John gave me the number of the new maintenance chief there, it wouldn't cost more than ten.
And D O T, or right?
If you can buy the vinyl, if you can pay for the vinyl stuff, I'll have a crew put it up.
We want slats, just the slats, the wall, what is it?
If you look at St. Louis Church, you see that wall?
Yeah.
All right, it's a vinyl covering, they go in front of the, you take the trowel for the fence, and you just tie wrap it up, but I don't want flowers and plants and things. I'd like to have some, maybe hatches like, like you, hatches.
Hatches on the...
Yeah, looks like bricks. Stones, big stones and hatches, you only have to cover two streets, and then I could get less if it's behind it, doesn't matter. But, it won't cost big money.
So aesthetically, you just want it to look, you want it to look nice?
Junk.
Yeah.
Really, it's creepy.
Okay, I'll...
I mean, I, I, John, give me a number, I'm, I talked to the Greenway, they have no money, not true. I talked to the Amiens Thursday night, had the meeting I might do, they had a Cuban trafficker here, that was astronomical, in this state and everywhere, and I, I could go to them, because we have that five million dollar endowment for their property, made sure that was in the agreement we had, so, I didn't wanna turn it over to the Greenway, I wanna make sure it stays where it is. To me, that's the prettiest park down there, so.
Parcel thirteen.
So, parcel twelve is still my eyesore, I see it, the people see it, I mean, there's nothing you can do with it, if you're gonna leave it, that's fine, because at least, that's, it won't cost more than, I don't think, ten thousand dollars, and I'll put it up, I'll let people put it up.
Bobby, you have two North End people sitting on that board, with voting power and suggestion power.
On the Greenway?
Yeah, this is D O T, though.
This is D O T, D O T owns that.
Yeah, the Greenway...
So, why do you, why do you have a problem with the Greenway?
I went to the Greenway to get the same type, about that panel that's on the other side, trying to get some money out of them to put it on this side.
The Conservancy is not in charge of parcel six, parcel twelve, and parcel eighteen, because those have always been, those have always been slated, slated at the development process.
Because they're, I mean...
Yeah, we can, we can look into that, definitely, that's, I mean, I appreciate you bringing that to our attention, but, yeah.
And also, I'm on the D R A, I provide, I need once a month, and you can't imagine the pollution that's coming up from the waterfront area all the way down, and what Merritt wants to do, and what other people want to do, and we're still talking about this traffic blocking issue. So, what they say and what they do, you can walk down there anytime you want at five o'clock, you can't go by those streets.
You're talking about Atlantic Gas Service, are you? Yeah. I, I will say about the traffic, in terms of the Bullfinns Triangle developments, and the Garden, and Government Center Garage, there, there is a, there is a better traffic plan that will, that will be, that'll be implemented in the next, I think, within the next year, in terms of the streets that, that are all being developed, and it will make it a little easier to maneuver through, I mean, right now, it's, it's a mess, and especially on like a Garden, especially like at a Garden, in fact, it's an absolute mess. I think they'll, they'll, they're gonna be making it ways that you can get through, and I don't wanna, I don't know if it's public yet, so I don't wanna, I don't, I think they just shared information, like, some information in terms of what it might be, or wanted to get some input, but to make it easier to get through that Bullfinns Triangle area, I think is on the way. So, traffic will be a little bit alleviated to some degree, balance that off with the more, with the more congestion.
Yeah, I had a footnote to add to what Tony was talking about before, in terms of traffic, and then I have a question that I hope is state-oriented. The footnote is that the new Spalding works now out of Charlestown, so that means that the bridge, it really, you can't close down the bridge, and there's more traffic now going to Spalding. I don't think any planning has been done by the B R A to take into account the fact that all of Spalding is going in that direction now, with all these other insurances and that injection as well.
I don't know how they do it. I, I, again, we, we were just saying, we don't know if they're gonna, if they would close the bridge. To be perfectly honest, I'm not, I'm not sure how the construction is gonna, are they gonna shut it?
You can't, you can't close it.
Right, you can't close the bridge, right?
You can't close it.
You can close half of it.
But even, most half of it is gonna be very difficult to plan, and it does involve people coming from, not only the North End, not only Boston, but people come all over New England, come all over New England to use Spalding. My bigger question is, that can the state do anything to change the design of the T D Garden Project, and some of these other projects that are grossly high, that don't take the neighborhoods into consideration? The highest tower...
Six hundred feet.
It's six hundred feet, and the zacums do, if I recall correctly. So, we're gonna have a tower, it's really got five parts to it, it's almost five towers stuck together, right next to the zacum, that's gonna be three times as high as it is. It's gonna block the view of Bunker Hill, from the, it's gonna block, block the view of the zacum from many angles, but the, it's just, it's, it's a project that's been conceived without any sensitivity to the place where it's being put. It's been conceived to make a whole lot of money, and squeeze a whole lot of people into a little space. Is there anything that can be done at the state level? Because, you know, here in these meetings, we try to work with the city, but working with the B R A is, I mean, it's, it's irresponsible, but they're allowing it to happen. Is there anything the state can do to look at this project?
Well, tech, I mean, I don't know.
I don't believe, I don't believe the state does have a role in it, it's a, it's a municipal process with the Zoning Board of Appeals for the City of Austin, probably at some point, right? B R A, large project review, Article eighty process, but it's not, it's not a, a state function to oversee a development project like that.
That was zoned, that has been zoned for that height, since the day they took the original Garden down in the, in the mid-nineties.
So, they told us.
Yeah, no, no, I mean, I, I, I always...
They rezoned it when they did the original project?
When they, when they did the original, when they, when they took down the original Garden and did the new Garden, from ninety-three to ninety-five, or whatever it was, they zoned, they zoned that, that property for, whatever, six hundred feet is, I think, if that's what you're saying, it doesn't forget.
Yeah, the zacum wasn't born yet.
Well, the zacum planning was done by then.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, I mean, because, I mean, yeah, because the zacum planning had been done in the eighties. Yeah, so, I mean, there, there was an understanding, I guess, someone, sorry, someone was there saying, at some point in time, saying that, yes, this, this project, or this, this place would be, or this, this area would be zoned for higher than the actual zacum would be, would be in...
And so, the state has no control over that. So, does it have control over any of the other projects going up there? I think there are ten of them surrounding the North End right now. No, all city, and so, it all comes under the B R A?
In reality, the only thing that...
Was the parcel nine with the, parcel...
Parcel nine, parcel nine is a state, is a state land, or a state land being, being sold to, to a developer, or leased to a developer. And, and then the T, then the T, in fact, the T substations themselves are actually, you know, obviously, being built upon, so there is, there is that discussion, but outside of the zoning issue, no, it's, it's a, it's a city, B R A municipal.
And that's a similar function in every city or town across the Commonwealth, you know, we're not involved with that, yeah.
Aaron, what I could do is, when I'm on your value, but we stop at Columbus Park, and working down, lining a gap all the way down the other end, and I can't see why where the walkway that's seen continues on now, but to, to South Drive and beyond, I can't see why we can't go that route. And I'll talk to the B R A when I have that meeting once a month, and see if, in fact, we can address this and see what the problem is.
Did you say the harbor work, I'm sorry?
Yeah.
Okay.
Harbor workers all the way up here.
Right.
But we're stopping it from Columbus Park all the way down the other end, all the way to Chinatown, to South End, and even up to New Mass. So, why concentrate on that side? Because of the harbor, I'm not sure, the harbor's still part of it, I could bring it up and see if, in fact, we can address this section.
I was just gonna ask if Consul Almatino was invited, like, to this meeting, because I feel like we have a lot of city issues, and if we had all three of you, it would kind of...
He was invited, as, you know, the counselor is a regular at, at neighborhood council and newer meetings, so I think he...
Yeah, we, 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 we wanted to do this together, because we're both, I mean, we're the two representatives in the legislature. We, we get, I expect that, well, when we do these, but we wanna try to, you know, have a conversation with issues that are more within our bailiwick, right? And so, if Sal came, he would, he would have dominated the conversation, right? So, we wanna try to talk about some different issues, and we've gotten some good questions about some, you know, different issues that we deal with in the legislative process. But, we stay in touch with the local issues, because we work with Sal, and, you know, we try to be as helpful as we can on the, on the municipal issues.
On the municipal issues and the local issues, and, I mean, like, I'm, I'm regularly involved in discussions, and, and, you know, some, I mean, my hands are sometimes tied because it's not a state issue versus, versus a city issue, where, I mean, in the state issue, I'd have a little more ability to, to weigh some, some, some say. But, I will, it's funny, you go, I go to, I go talk to other, other reps, and he probably talks, talks to other centers, and we talk about issues that we deal with, and I sometimes bring up the fact that I have to go talk about a liquor license being, you know, fighting, fighting keeping a liquor license open past, past midnight, and people are like, what are you doing? Why are you arguing in the middle of that argument? And I say, well, that's, that's, goes with my territory, in terms of my discussion. That's what people wanna hear me talk about, in some, in some ways, is, is keeping, you know, licenses only open to a certain amount of time. So, each district's different, so each, everything is different, but, but the, the local issues do come in hand, do come and play a lot for local, you know, city-elected officials, even if they're not in the city, they're working, you know, they're, they're actually representatives of the state.
And representative, just to follow up, I remember going to a here and for mass vote for the preregistration, it's for the sixteen and seventeen-year-olds. So, the House passed the bill, you said, I think, correct?
Last slide just said a session, yeah.
So, did it just get shut down?
It did not, it did not make it over to the Senate.
No, it made it over the Senate, it never left the Senate.
Never left the Senate.
And I support it.
Yes, he does.
I'm a former chief of election laws, actually, the audit, the random audit provision is a provision that I filed in my own bill for as well, so, yeah, it just, it ran into a little bit of a hiccup in the Senate, we're, we're, we're working on it, you know, yeah.
So, yeah, we're taking a second crack at it here, and, you know, we're trying to figure out what's the, what's the best bill that both, both chambers can agree on and move forward.
Yeah, in, in, in different municipalities across the Commonwealth, some of the clerks, you know, the Town Clerks Association, they're not too in love with having to do some of the provisions in the bill, in particular, the random audit provision. And, while, you know, we don't see any kind of signals of any kind of, you know, vote tampering, you know, I, I watched, when I worked on this a number of years ago, I watched a documentary on H E O, Hacking Democracy, it was called, it was on the heels of the Kerry-Bush election. And, you know, from a technological standpoint, thank you, thank you, Jeff, from a technological standpoint, it was pretty scary, that very easily, without anyone knowing, you could tamper with, you know, an optical scan machine, which is what we use for our voting practices in Massachusetts, you could, you could change the programming of it to actually disrupt what people's votes actually were, right? And so, it was a pretty scary documentary, so that's why I worked with Massville, Common Cause, and some others, Legal Women Voters, to file a random audit provision of election reform. I think it's, I think it's worth doing, but there's, there's a lot of other municipal officials that, that don't think it's needed, and would maybe cost them more work, and maybe cost them more resources that they can't afford, and so, there's a, you know, there's a healthy debate over it.
I actually liked it because of the fact that we rely on such, we rely on technology now to a lot of things, including the machines that we, we put our ballots into, and basically, we press a button now, and a, and a thing spits out numbers, and it tells us who won, who lost, and, you know, what place they finished in. And I, I liked it for the fact that, you know, machines aren't always a hundred percent correct, as we know, technology isn't perfect. So, I liked it that, you know, we should just be double-checking every, you know, randomly, double-checking whether these numbers that the machine is spitting out are the right numbers, and if they're accurate. Because even though it is a little more work for the clerks, and it's a little more work for the Secretary of State, it also is, you know, better to be, be certain than to take it, you know, just leave it to chance, or leave it to guessing. And if there was something wrong, then we would know to, you know, to try to fix it. And I think that was, that was the essence of the audit, and I think, in reality, it was, it was something that we, we should continue to push forward. But again, you know, this, you know, the, to put a reform package together of this magnitude, and it was a pretty, it was a pretty substantial bill, to be able to get it, to be able to get it completely done, it doesn't always happen on the first, first try, and so, that's why we're, we're...
Takes more than one at bat to get ahead.
I always steal that line, yeah, oh, yeah.
I have a question.
That's the Red Sox, right?
Other than what we discussed for bills and stuff, you guys have any plans to sponsor or co-sponsor or initiate any new bills in the next year or so?
No, we got, I mean, we're in the middle of the legislative session right now, and so, our bill filing that we did was, was almost a year ago, yeah. So, yeah, we both have dozens of bills.
I mean, we do, there are, there are late files that happen all the time, and, and depends on what hap, depends on, you know, the circumstances of what's going on, but traditionally, we try, you try to get most of your bills filed before the filing deadline, which is sometime in January, so, I mean, it just passed for the, for the two-year session. But, you know, I mean, every two years, you know, if, if you get re-elected, then every two years, you get, you get the opportunity to come back and, and file, you know, some different bills, or, you know, change some, maybe, maybe, maybe you don't, you lost interest in, in one issue, and you wanna focus, focus your attention or your resources on another your attention or your resources on another issue, and it gives you that opportunity. So I always say, like, as we get, you know, towards the second half of the session, whatever bills or issues you think that, you know, we should be, we should be paying attention to, by all means, you know, we ask that you let us know, and we can potentially file it. I did want to acknowledge City Council Large Canada and my good friend Jeff Ross, who's here tonight, who came, just came by.
So, Aaron, are you saying that in order to do anything on the community center for the North End, it has to go through Sal, because he's in charge of the city? Or is this, like, what can we do to get this going? Like, something in the North End for the community, for the elderly and?
We, I mean, our predecessors, and in turn, both us, as we both took office, pushed very hard for a Y M C A to be built on parcel 6 of the Greenway. And it was something that we even allocated $16 million in state funding to help them build that, you know, the decking, the decking of that off-ramp to build a Y M C A. As time went on, it became harder and harder, it became clear and clear that the Y M C A, being a nonprofit, being a 501(c)(3), could not afford to build the type of project that was necessary along that corridor. For instance, you know, the Y M C A builds buildings, and I didn't know this going into it, or when I first started working on this, they build buildings that are typically like $5 million to $7 million. The building to actually build on top of this piece of property or a piece of land, it's like $50 million. And they just don't have the fund, they didn't have the fundraising resources to be able to make that happen. It's, I agree, I mean, trying to have a larger community center or a better community center is always on my mind, whether it's, you know, upstairs in the gym where you can't take a free pointer from the corner, because it's cut out, because the tours are cut out over there, you mean, versus other necessities that we need. I wish we had more space. I mean, that's, that's one of the issues that you deal with, but living in a small congested neighborhood, I mean, we are basically one square mile. And we squeeze every little inch out of this neighborhood we possibly can, whether it's through, you know, residential businesses, you know, open space, you know, community space. I mean, we try to squeeze as much as we can. But, you know, the neighborhood changed over the year, you know, the neighborhood changed over the years, and certain things, you know, like the C C Center, which, you know, I grew up playing at the C C Center all my, you know, as a kid, you know, that's no longer there. And some of that was in essence because of the fact that there wasn't as many kids around. So it didn't become a priority, you know, to many, to everyone, because there wasn't as many kids as time went on. I think that tide has kind of changed and is going in a different direction now. And it shows where we just expanded the Elliott School, or, you know, we're expanding the Elliott School. So I think as that tone changes or that tide changes, we'll start to see potentially more community space developed, you know, but it's all timing, depending on what's available, what happens.
What about, like, this building itself? Why isn't there any more programs that go on in this building itself? Isn't this part of the city?
Well, I hate, I would hate to punt on that issue, but that is, I mean, that is more of a city issue in terms of, in terms of how, you know, the Nazaro Center is operated.
But the, we're only allowed to come in here two days a week, you know what I mean? The kids have to leave by a certain time, the doors are locked. So basically, they hang in the street. And I know, I threw up in the street, it doesn't matter, but I also had North End at school where I went every night until 11 o'clock, so I really wasn't in the street. But over here, they just don't, you know, they have, they can stay open, but they choose not to.
Well, I will say this. Last winter, me and Matthew Bagamal, you know, my dear friend, we decided we wanted to try to open up the Nazaro on Saturday nights, once a month, and, or once or twice a month, and get it staffed. You know, we had to, we had to pay Clark ourselves to make sure that it stayed open. I don't know, yeah, it was Clark then, because Clark's left since, but, because it is, you know, he has to pay, he has to have someone that actually works here doing it. And Carl was very receptive to it, as long as we paid Clark. And, but, you know, the challenge was, we tried to do it, we did it a couple times, we were successful, but some weeks, you know, we couldn't get anybody to help us. And on top of it, sometimes we couldn't even get the kids to stay. And so it was, it was challenging, to say the least. But I think that, you know, if the right approach is taken in terms of, in terms of the Nazaro Center, they are sometimes receptive to try to keep it open longer. And I think last winter was an example of that.
You've got parcel 9 all coming up, right, for bids, and the state's the lone end. Why can't the community put an exception on that if they wanna build on it, that they have to do something? Not like a Y M C A, huge stable pool, but maybe a community center there.
So you mean like a city of Boston?
Yeah, we can shake them down. You guys can't.
Where exactly is parcel 9?
My parcel 9 is down.
Parcel 9 is on Blackstone Street, right after the Greenway, where the push carts are. Which, I think, yeah, it was designated to be a hotel.
Yes.
And I forget what else is part of the project.
They're gonna put the push carts.
They're gonna put the, in the first floor, or round floor, is gonna be part of the push carts. You know, there was no, there was no, no nonprofit entity, no city, no city entity that actually, you know, wanted to build on that site, or, you know, when the R P was out, you know, made a proposal to build on that site, except for the museum project. Talking about nonprofits, the museum project was the only thing that actually came. And many, and many people, including myself, did not believe the museum project could raise the money and build that, build that, while it's a great idea, just couldn't, just didn't have the resources to do it. I mean, it's, so it's trying to find, I still have hope that one day, you know, parcel 6 will be something of a community outlet. I don't know what it would be, but I'd hope it'd be a community outlet, because I don't wanna see housing there. Because, just as we talked about, there's enough.
Why, why does it have to be the Y M C A? Why can't the city or the state itself build a community center there? It's funding?
It's funding. And the state, and the reason why, I don't, the reason why the projects that got to the kind of the finals of that, of that parcel 9, were the finalists is because they were, they were ready to put down a large financial, you know, offer to buy, to buy the land. And the state, as we all know, is crying out for as much revenue as possible, needs to, it needs to maximize its ability to make profit off of those types of parcels of land. So this way that, you know, they don't have to keep coming back to us and asking us to potentially raise taxes, which no one wants to, you know, no one wants to take that, do that, or move forward like that. So, I don't know.
The point is well-taken, though.
Yes.
The point on the community center is very.
There's no way to go, whenever you have to do something, you have to go to different towns. And when you go to them different towns and you see what they have, it's just, it's, it feels bad that our community doesn't have that.
I thought the community grant money, weren't they in the old days, we should have grant money. Community grant money, and that's how they built all those things all the way.
That was all federal government stuff.
Different, little different time.
Yeah.
Shake down, Tom.
Any other questions?
We'll stick around, yeah, we'll stick, I'll stick around, but thank you for coming. Thanks, Steve. Good job, guys.